Finance and Administration Committee meeting, February 22nd. Will the minute take reflect the same members are present? And I'll hand this back over to Mr. Manager.
At this time, I'd like to have Roger Noak go through the Community Development Department quickly and answer any questions you might have about his budget.
Thank you, Madam Chairman and Mr. Manager. I took the liberty at, right after break, to pass out a organizational chart for the Community Development Department. It's a truncated version of the legal size sheet that you received earlier. This actually does hit the highlights with respect to the positions and the individuals who are filling those positions at present. The only position that is TBD or to be determined is the Housing Zoning Inspector. And at this point in time, we are working with HR to set up interviews beginning next week for that particular position. As you can see from the chart, oh, also, by the way, on the reverse side of the organizational chart is a brief breakdown of the typical roles and responsibilities. I try to keep it as short as possible. Going back to the organizational chart page, the Community Development Department has authorized eight full-time staff positions. We presently have three part-time inspectors, which would be the Electrical, Plumbing, and Fire Safety Inspectors. One other note that I might want to touch on is the Administrative Analyst position, which is 30% funded by the Community Development Department, is actually a position which we share with the Finance Department. They pay the remainder of that line item. That particular staff member, the Administrative Analyst, works with the Community Development Group and is responsible for reconciling and tracking construction bond accounts, and he will be providing oversight for future lending institution escrow accounts. If you can remember, some time back, excuse me, we had talked about eliminating the letters of credit and simplifying that process, and this is going to hopefully be done within the very near future. With respect to the roles and responsibilities and other issues of the department, the long version is provided, is going to be provided if it already hasn't, in our 2006 year-end summary. Yes, which you've received, I guess. That said, I would like to just move on to the specifics of the revenues for-
And I just want to jump in and just make a comment. I really like what you've provided. It's very clear and straightforward and it's easy to follow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
I just have a question regarding your chart so I can understand your structure. Is John actually over Joe, who's actually over the Housing Zoning? Or are they all three, like, under John equally?
There are all three under John, but the Housing Zoning Inspector is going to be supervised by the Code Enforcement Supervisor.
So where you have John over the other two, that would be actually separate, not the three in succession?
They're in succession with regard to organizational flow and order of succession after John, and that's basically how it's laid out.
Alderman, sit back.
Roger, would you agree a little bit on the, between the Code Enforcement and even the Senior Building Inspector and the Housing Zoning Inspector, that until the rental housing inspection program really gets up and running, because, you know, we passed the ordinance, I'm sure not everybody who has rental property is going to run in and say, you know, "I've got one on Central Montrose. Please, you know, where do I need to sign up and pay my money?" It's going to take a while to really get that program going. Would you agree that the Housing Zoning Inspector to be hired and the Code Enforcement can be a little bit interchangeable? If one person gets behind, if, you know, we get another problem with rodents near the train station, that, you know, that Housing Zoning person could actually, is going to have a similar background to the Code Enforcement Supervisor to kind of work hand-in-hand together?
Oh, absolutely, Alderman. With respect to the roles and responsibilities, one thing that we have, we have tried to do over the years is cross-train our people so that they can be multifunctional, and you're absolutely right, they're going to be interchangeable parts, and people are going to be able to back others up so that we don't have a lag in services to the community because one person is off sick or at school or what have you.
And Ross assisted in running that program, I think, in another community where he came from, correct?
Yeah, you are correct. He did it in Streamwood, and he is an integral part in organizing the functioning of that particular program. And we just had the Code Enforcement Supervisor complete some advanced training with respect to the rental housing program and those specifics. And this particular group is made up of not only the Housing Zoning Inspector, the Code Enforcement Supervisor, but also Ross and myself. And we are in the, in the process of completing the development of the forms that are going to be used for that, and we certainly hope that this program is up and running very shortly, hopefully prior to June 1st of this year. That's based also on some of our revenue projections, which I'll get into in a little while.
Please.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Alderman Suback?
Certainly.
Just to make sure I understand, if a contractor comes in and wants to put a building up, who determines what the area is of ground coverage and so forth?
That particular submittal is first placed on John Forrest's desk. John Forrest determines the aptitude and ability to place that structure on the site that's requested.
Okay, and the other question I had was, the mayor mentioned the other day that we had talked about or asked about you making one-day permits available for the minor things. It's about two years ago we asked about it, and you said that would be done shortly, and we're still not-
We actually do that on a regular basis, but we have not yet set the times. We do plan, prior to this year's construction season, starting May 1st, to have at least one or two days a week for certain periods of time set aside where someone can come in with their application and with the required documents and get that permit instantly if everything is in order.
And that'll be when?
That will, that will, we're trying to get that operational sometime around May 1st, sometime in the month of May, right when we start having our big rush for permits such as for decks and sheds and patios and things of that nature. We were thinking of trying to possibly have it on a Tuesday from 7:30 in the morning to 11:30 in the morning, and possibly on a Thursday from 12:30 to 4:30.
That the people would come in asking for it, you mean?
I beg your pardon?
That the people would have to be there at those days and those times?
Those days and those times for walk-up service. If they want to call and make an appointment, that's perfectly acceptable. We do that currently.
Okay, can we get something showing which permits will be available this way?
Certainly, we can, we can provide counsel with the handout that we're going to use, which will be shown right outside the office area there where permit applications are taken. We are also thinking about placing it in the newsletter so that everybody is aware of the fact that they can come in on those dates and times or call and make an appointment.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I want to take one more question and then I'll ask that you go through the budget and then we ask remaining questions. Alderman, sit back.
Roger, I think, in my opinion, this is probably the first year that I see your department actually being fully staffed to a level where it's not just putting out fires, but actually maybe you might have an opportunity to be proactive, which hopefully should help. And I think that with that, though, comes continued improvement, and I think that, you know, some of the things I always want to make sure is, some of the only complaints I get from residents is like, sometimes the forms aren't easy to follow or that they're, you know, they're redoing a basement and they got the forms for the basement and it says, "Oh, you're doing electrical. Oh, you need this form too," instead of having all those forms, you know, given it. It was probably an isolated incident, or it might not have been accurate, but just to continue to work on the customer service aspect from the resident's point of view that when they come in with the basement remodeling or the bathroom remodeling, here's everything you may need, you know, and make sure everything's there, and then let them decipher through, "Hey, I'm not doing electrical, I'm not doing heating," and, you know, so I think with being fully staffed that that's going to be that, hopefully, we're going to continue to get better on some of those aspects.
Point well taken. We are continuously looking at those forms, trying to update or gather information from other communities or through continuing education conferences where we might gather more information or a better way of doing it, and that's perfectly conceivable. One of the things that you had mentioned does happen on occasion. We've had instances where people would like, they come in for a deck permit, and then when the inspector goes out to initially check the site preparation, the post hole depths and things along those lines, we find out, well, now the individual decided he's going to place electric out there to power either a cooking grill or some other appliance or so. And now what we've done is, we've provided in each of the vehicles used by the inspectors a file which has copies of those additional applications or information that they might need to have filled out. Then what he can do is, while he's doing the one inspection out there at that time, the owner or the contractor can fill that information out, we'll bring it back to the office and expedite the process.
And my point is that we should use that knowledge to say that when a person comes in for a deck, those additional permits should be attached to there saying, "If you're going to have a built-in gas grill, you're going to need this kind of inspection if there's going to be electricity," and, you know, so use that knowledge to go that step further of actually having that initially.
I agree to a certain extent with you. One of the problems that occurs, if we were to provide each and every individual with a multi-form packet, it can get quite expensive, and our printing costs would go up dramatically because those pressure-sensitive, multi-page forms cost about $3 apiece or so.
Okay, thank you.
But we're, we're aware of those inquiries that you made, and we're working on it constantly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I briefly want to touch on the revenues and some of the information that Ms. Powers had mentioned earlier is, is quite dramatic, as you are all aware of the fact that in 2006 we had a record number of building permits issued, and the revenue source was quite an increase over the previous year. What we try to do in our estimation of, excuse me, of the actual revenues generated is we try and take historical records as well as what we currently have as approved projects.
Can I interrupt you? I apologize.
Certainly.
I don't believe we have the revenues unless, are you on a different page?
Oh, I beg your pardon. This is in the revenue section of the first page after General Fund.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And it occurs right after the subtotal of taxes. Starts with the building permit fees or building permits, and follows through down that line to the subtotal for permits and fees.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Well, anyway, those are, those are part of the, that is part of the process, I should say, that, that we use in calculating those particular figures, and some of the issues and developments that we were, we were concerned with providing and generating revenue this year was, they rather, they were three of the larger projects we have in town, most notably the Wooddale Station on Irving Park Road, the Gagliano Brothers Project. We also have, we also have the Lennar Project, which would be along Spruce at, at Montrose, and then we also have the Arbor Woods Project. What we did was we based our figures on a 50% build-out for those three particular projects, and naturally, that's dependent upon a few factors, but we try to be cautious in our estimate of the revenues. And even though we were cautious, we were still able to estimate a figure that is reflected in that revenue page. The other item I wanted to bring up, more or less specific to department revenues, is the fact that, that increase in the year 2006 was so dramatic that when you go through the, not only the proposed, estimated, and projected annual costs for department expenditures, there was almost enough money received during that year to pay for the next two years of department operations, for all expenditures included, which I think is quite dramatic, and that was due to the fact specifically of the Bristol Park development at Devon and Wooddale Road. The increased revenue was aided by staff diligence, too, in initiating another line item, which would be the contractor registration. And that particular item does, rather, is reflected on that particular page. It is just four lines up from the subtotal for permits and fees. And as you can see, the 2006 revenue source generated $25,900. We do have an increase to $31,000 for the 2007 projections. Now, this particular fee and revenue source or total is really predicated on whether or not contractors come back into Wooddale to do work, and we're expecting that a certain percentage will not necessarily come back just due to their ability to secure work within Wooddale. The, the other fee increases, too, and I believe it might have been Alderman Tolemy that mentioned the fact that part of that increase in revenues, too, has been generated by the increase in our building permit fees as well as our zoning and subdivision fees, and that has all contributed to the increase in the overall total. One of the things that I would like to mention, too, is that the initiation or creation of these revenue generating programs has been accomplished through the valued support of both the mayor as well as city council, and we thank you for your support and proactive stance with respect to those particular issues. And one thing to make note of, too, is that staff, we continually strive to, to seek out new sources of revenue as well as keeping the line on cost expenditures. The, one significant increase that is proposed for this coming year would be the Rental Housing Inspection Fee Program, and that is projected to generate $50,000 in revenue, and we expect that figure to be conservative because that figure also does not include any of the possible fines that will be also generated from this program. And past experience has shown that when these programs begin, that the occurrences of having the inspector go out and find nothing wrong are absolutely remote. So another item that will be something to at least think about is that there will be additional fees generated from that particular program.
Question on that, Roger?
Certainly.
Madam Chairman.
Alderman Suback?
Oh, and again, just to reiterate, that program, the goal is that, is to get the rental housing, single-family houses that are being rented out, as well as the apartments that are being rented out, to get our inspectors in there on an annual basis to make sure there's not overcrowding, to make sure they don't have people living in the basement or multiple families, and to make sure they're up to code. What percentage did you use of compliance to come up with that $50,000 figure? Because I thought $50,000 was an estimate if everybody complied with the rates we did, whatever it was, $100, $150. I can't remember what Alderman Wesley came up with.
That particular $50,000 figure was based solely upon the number of structures and the number of apartment dwellings that we are aware of.
And it's too high, because that, that assumes 100% compliance, and you're not going to get 100% compliance in any program, and we're not going to get 100% compliance in our first year of it. It'll take time, and so I think a realistic figure is more like, you know, 60%? If you get 60%, I mean, how many people signed up for vehicle sticker the first year we had it? How many people signed up when we increased it? Alderman Wesley, they're getting, using calls left and right that they're not paying it, so.
I think we can feel comfortable with keeping it at that $50,000 figure because that, that is something that we're going to also have the additional staff members working on, as well as we do get support from the Police Department with respect to the rental housing units and investigating those particular instances, as well as requiring them to pay the standard fee as well as the per-unit fee.
Right, but it's, it's still might, my guess, it might even take us two, a year, two years, three years to find out all the single-family houses that are actually rentals versus owner-occupied, but it's great if you can get. I hope you can get 100%, but to budget, you know, 100% compliance on the first year of a new program, it's, I don't, I think you're putting too much burden on yourself, and I don't think that's even a realistic number. If, if we thought the total, total revenue was going to be $75,000, I'd say, you know, but-
Well, that's why we didn't include the revenue source from the possible fine structure, too. But, but we have in excess of, we have in excess of 600 structures, not necessarily totaling the total number of units within all those buildings.
So, so to clarify, you're not including any kind of fines that you would impose?
Not at all.
And I would imagine that there will be some fines over the next year.
Oh, there will be plenty of fines.
Okay, okay, and, and these are the apartment buildings that we're aware of, is what you budgeted on, correct?
Correct. These are all of the multi, the multi-unit rental structures within the city, as well as all of the two flats, three flats, four flats, five flats, six flats, and other structures, as well as approximately 125 to 150 single-family homes that we are aware of through our research with the Finance Department and Water Billing.
Thank you. Alderman Wesley.
Keep in mind, when we put that proposal together, we didn't, when we did the apartment, when we did the apartment buildings, we are charging per unit. So like Orchard Lakes, I don't know how many they got. I mean, we calculate out there, it's almost, I mean, with our fees, I think it was a little over $10,000 just for Orchard Lakes.
We're char, right, we're charging $150 per building plus $50 per unit of one.
I, I understand that, but this figure assumes 100% compliance, and I think Maggie shook her head that we're not going to have 100% compliance in year one. That is, we don't have 100% compliance on our vehicle stickers. What's our compliance on our business licenses? It's not, that's not 100, and that's been around for 15 years. So why, how can we assume we're going to get 100% compliance on a new program? It's just, it's an unreasonable revenue stream, because I, the program's going to be upside down for the first couple of years, absolutely. So, you know, why all of a sudden, next year when you get your budget figure, say, "Roger, how come we only collected?" You'll be, Alderman Wesley will be yelling, "How come you only collected $40,000 or $35,000 last year? Why come those guys weren't out there collecting that money?" Because they didn't know about it at that point, so I would say, plan on 60% coverage for year one.
Did you wish to go through any other items? And, okay. Okay. Any other, Alderman Tolemy?
I, I would concur with Alderman Suback, and, and I would go with the, you know, a ballpark of 60%, so I would lower your revenues.
Motion then to change the rental housing inspection revenue to $36,000. Is there a second?
Second.
Another question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? I do. Motion carries.
Could I just?
Alderman Tolemy?
The, the good news is this, Roger, you lower it, and, and when you, your people prove Alderman Suback wrong next year, you know.
He won't be here next year.
Yeah, but, but he can read about it.
We'll, we'll actually send him something in the mail.
Any other questions, comments on the proposed budget that Mr. Noak has presented? Alderman Suback?
Roger, do you have nothing for, I know your computers don't come under this fund, or do they?
That would be out of the IT fund.
Okay, do you have, does the IT fund have enough money for computer equipment for your staff? Questions for you, like that they're going to have some kind of handheld devices that when they're out doing the inspections, they can forward back what the violations are back to staff and not have written forms?
We are, we have been researching that for the last few years, and we find that currently there, there isn't any community really using a quality product where they, where they can just use it as a standalone system. That's something that we had projected a few years back wanting to do so. We even suggested we wanted to get them via radio wave to upload into the computer database, but nobody makes the product yet, and there's still an iffy portion. Ross has been checking with a few other communities, and, and we haven't budgeted for it because we don't have the correct answer. So we're, we're still working on it.
Along those lines, are you able to now print color maps within your department, within the space where John Forrest works as well as the other team members?
Currently, we don't have capabilities for the GIS system on each and every computer, not to be able to reproduce the way we would like, but those upgrades are going to be taking place. Also, part of the, part of the process will be in utilizing the GIS system, especially at an advanced level. I know Ross had put in for that grant, and we will be receiving it to, to get some additional software as well as a field unit, and this, too, is one of our designs in wanting to be able to produce quality reports, so that when the program gets going, we can focus in on a specific area of the city and highlight that and show everyone exactly what is happening in that part of town.
And, and then more specifically, if someone sends a color copy to the Building Department in the basement there, do they have access to a color printer that they can print on that floor?
No. The only color printer or copier is upstairs in the Administration Department.
And, how often do they get color copies, though, that are important to the job? Is it a high amount, or is, okay, so we're okay there?
Not that often. Yeah, so it's not a big problem, not yet.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Tolemy?
Just real quick, in looking, in looking at your expenses, because I know, for, for the sake of trying to get through all this, looking at your expenses, I really don't see anything out of, out of keel, I mean, from where you are, what you're budgeted for for '07 through '08. I mean, the biggest, of course, is, is in the salaries, you know, or is in the personnel, but that's understandable, so I don't, since, I don't have any questions on this, I mean, I don't know if anybody else has, but I think we should just move on to the next category.
Do that?
No, that's fine.
Okay. Any, any other final comments from you, Mr. Noak?
No, just, just to reiterate what Alderman Tolemy had, had mentioned, is the fact that the, the expenditures have remained quite static, and the only increase is really due to the rental housing program and an additional staff member.
Thank you. Mr. Noak?
Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Madam Chairman, next we'll do the Finance Department, then Police, and then finally City Services, and that will be the entire budget. In the, in the Finance Department, the biggest change is the, the salary numbers. As you know, we, we hired an administrative analyst who began January 1st, so we only have four months of that salary in the current fiscal year, but we'll have that full salary in 2008. Salary numbers do reflect the city's offer to Local 150, those increases. Of course, those numbers may change when we, we finally get a settlement, but at this point, we, we have budgeted what we know about. The only other thing I can tell you that's different is the office equipment line item. It's going from $500 to $5,250, and I, I got estimates from several companies who were talking about with financial software, because I realized we would probably need to replace our cash register drawer and our barcode readers. So I had to get some estimates, and that's a rough number. We, we hope to have a recommendation for the Finance Committee during the month of March on which software is preferred, and then I will have a better number for the, for the barcode readers and the, the cash registers. But each, each system requires something a little bit different. I'm not sure that the equipment we have right now could be used, so just to make sure that we didn't forget that. If we can't run the cash register, we can't collect the cash. And I will tell you also that the, this fiscal year '06, '07 has been very difficult in the Finance Department because of staff absences. We went for more than 30 days where we had one person who needed to run the window and answer the phone and open the mail. And that was because of a lack of cross-training, that was because just of a lack of people, two people out ill for extended periods of time. I think that using the administrative analyst position, as Roger Noack mentioned, to clean up some of this stuff on escrow accounts and builder's bonds is good. But our intention is to have him completely trained in every single aspect of the finance department and then in, in the community development department so that we have a resource when we have vacation, sickness, any other kind of absence. And that was missing in, in both of our departments, so we, we ended up putting out a lot of fires, too. Unfortunately, once that window is open in the finance department, we have to have staff there accessible to the public. There isn't any way we cannot open for business at 8:30 every day. So it, it's a, it's a different kind of work. You can't put the work aside. The work is there, immediate, has to be taken care of. And we, as I said, we went for more than 30 working days with one individual. So the days that I came in, I was helping at the window and opening the mail, and so was the assistant finance director. And then that put us behind on doing our financial reports and, you know, getting other things done. So I think we are, I think we've, we've stabilized the ship.
Great, thank you. Alderman Sueback.
Maggie, you're under professional services. That's the front item for yourself. How long ago did we bring in originally?
I think it was November of 2004.
And are you looking for an increase in the rate that we pay you on hourly basis from this year to last year?
Not in this, not in this budget.
It's been flat?
No. And in fact, I have, I have my hours reduced. The, the goal here is, of course, to have succession planning. So we have some people trained in the finance department to carry things on.
Right.
And, and I don't know at what point we'll arrive there, but it was clear to me, and especially in discussions with the city manager, that we, the finance department apparently limped along for years not having anybody able to step up to the plate and take over, which caused all these problems. I mean, I've come to you how many times with problems that I've discovered, things that needed to be researched and then finally fixed. I'm not saying we, we still won't find some, but we, we have made headway, but I would hate to see that go backwards.
Absolutely, yeah.
And so, so that's the point, really. But I'm, I'm the wild card, if you will. That's where, that's where we can change things. I can reduce my time.
But the minute, eventually, because you, when you came in here, your idea or the goal was you were coming in to kind of fix, you didn't realize probably
Yeah.
the mess we had, but you, you fixed everything, and we're continuing to fix things. But eventually...